Of now this and the appeal. Yesterday, you may have heard. A veto proof majority of the Minneapolis City Council announced their intention to disband the Minneapolis Police Department. Today, I'm joined by four Minneapolis City Council members, City Council President Lisa Bender, Council Members Jeremiah Ellison, Alondra Kano, and Philip. Sorry, and Philip Cunningham, as well as Parks and Recreation Board Commissioner Lundell French, to talk about what led to the historic decision and what will come next for Minneapolis. The Minneapolis Police Department has long been under fire for racist conduct, including regularly killing black people. Clearance rates for violent crime like murder and rape have been abysmal for decades. Four out of five rapes, for example, are never cleared in the city. Minneapolis is far from alone and having a major policing program in cities across the country. They are struggling to answer the question of policing and racism and policing and brutality. As protests continue nationwide in the wake of the killing of George Floyd. George Floyd was killed by Minneapolis Police, Breonna Taylor, an EMT slain by Louisville Police, and so many other young black people whose lives have been taken. And Minneapolis City Council has decided that enough is enough. They've taken a remarkable, a remarkable step, politically remarkable for its bravery, socially remarkable for its reliance on data and evidence. The veto proof majority will disband the Minneapolis Police Department and invest in proven community-led public safety instead. This is also unprecedented. And including the Minneapolis City Council calls to realign public safety budgets by shifting resources away from traditional law enforcement. And investing on the front end and public health-based community, sorry, public health-based and community-led strategies are being made across the country. From New York City to Chicago to Los Angeles and in many other major metropolitan areas. And that's what we'll be talking about today. So let's go to Council President Bender. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
So Council President Bender, you've talked about the need to disband the police and create a transformative new approach to public health and safety for the people of Minneapolis. I think everybody who has been following these stories and following these stories over the past six years, right? Because we've, well, past many decades, but especially I would say since the, since the death of, of Mike Brown. We've seen really killing after killing by, by police officers, often of black men, unarmed black men. And I, I'd love to hear from you how we got here. How did you determine that the Minneapolis Police Department really couldn't be reformed by the more surface sort of solutions that people tend to, tend to suggest?
Yeah, so when nine city council members from all corners of our community stood together on Sunday. We were standing with our community and we were responding to cries from our community for change. And that's because our community has seen the death of Jamar Clark and the reforms of our police department that followed. It's seen the death of Justine Damon and the shift of a new police chief and new leadership in our department. So I think our community is telling us that our attempts at reform, the shifts of leadership, the lists of things that cities can do to make their police departments work better. Aren't working and our highest priority is to keep every member of our community safe. So step one is to acknowledge that the Minneapolis Police Department isn't doing that. We see unprecedented low, I think, confidence in our police department, the University of Minnesota, our park board, our school board, arts institutions. Businesses and community leaders are breaking their relationships with MPD. So we have an urgent need to address that issue that our police department has lost the confidence of our community. And then a much bigger task ahead of us to work with our community to reimagine public safety so that every single member of our community is safe.
So I'm glad you brought up safety because I think that's a major issue for people when they hear about this, right? They, the first thing they think about is safety. So what do you say to people who are worried that disbanding the police department will lead to less safety? And how will you ensure that people are safe in Minneapolis? Whether they live there, they're work there, they're visiting, they want to see a Twins game or a Vikings game. What do you say to people who are worried that now this means they're not safe in your city?
I want to reassure people that the first thing on our mind is also the safety of every single resident and every visitor to our city. And we've heard loud and clear that our police department isn't creating that safety for everyone in our community. So we've also laid the groundwork for lots of change for investments in community-based safety strategies that are proven to help keep people safe. But the amount that we're investing in policing versus those community strategies is out of balance. So one immediate step for us is to really reignite our commitment to those community-based strategies. Councilmember Cunningham has been leading the work on a public health approach to public safety for a number of years. We've invested in community leadership and that knowledge rests, yes, in experts from around the country who are offering their support. But it really rests in the communities of Minneapolis that have been working on this for decades, that have been working together to keep each other safe for decades. And that knowledge is what we need to center in reimagining the future of public safety in our city.
So I think, you know, I think that what you're saying makes a lot of sense. And I think for people who are just coming to this issue, this idea that we overspend on the backend and we don't spend enough on the frontend to sort of keep people safe. Prevent a lot of the incidents that involve the police to begin with. People are really starting to come around to the idea that we overinvest in law enforcement. But I think people really want to know what happens next and what this looks like. And when we're reshaping people's imagination, they want something to imagine. So can you talk a little bit about what that, what that is?
Absolutely. I mean, our very next steps here in Minneapolis is to make good on the promise to invite every member of our community in to that conversation about reimagining safety. So each of us can share our own vision, but that community-led process has to be what brings us forward together. So I think for each of us, you know, understanding how we can keep investing in these community-based strategies is critical. Building those new systems is, is how we get to that new vision of public safety. And then in the very immediate term, we're taking steps to create more accountability within our police department. The State Department of Human Rights has brought legal action against our department for patterns of racial discrimination. We agreed upon a temporary restraining order with very immediate first steps just this last Friday. So we'll be doing very short-term things. We're laying the groundwork for big change. And most importantly, inviting our whole community in to help us shape that vision of holistic public safety that actually keeps every member of our community safe.
So Councilmember Ellison, I'd like to go to you briefly. So you originally called publicly to disband the police on June 4th. And some people have suggested that although this moment shows up policing as problems. It doesn't show that we need to get rid of the police department, right? We only need better standards for hire. We need more training. We need better accountability or civilian oversight commissions. Again, I think these are questions that people have, or solutions that people have raised over the past year. So not, these aren't unusual ideas. And I think the question is, do they work? So why isn't that enough? Why isn't it enough to train people better? Why isn't it enough to just fire the bad officer? Why is it, why do we need to go this, need to take this step into disbanding?
Yeah, you know, it's funny is a reporter from the Christian Science Monitor reached out to me recently and they reminded me that in 2016, they interviewed me. This is well before I was in office. They interviewed me to talk about a mural I painted. And I talked about police abolition in that, in that interview and I had kind of forgotten about that. What I said then, and what I think is, is, is coming to fruition now is that if something urgent doesn't happen. People are going to stop talking about reform and they're going to start talking about abolition. I think that's the moment that we've arrived at now. The reason that some of these other reforms haven't worked is because there is no system of accountability. And because of the way that we have empowered police unions and federations. We don't really have access to the kinds of accountability that would make any of those other measures really work, right? So we can have the training, we can hire locally, we can have a diverse workforce. But at the end of the day, if somebody's not going to face criminal consequences for committing a criminal act, then what incentive do they have to change their behavior? You know, also, we, when we go to discipline officers, we have a process. Especially when we go to fire them. And through that process, about 50% of all police that are fired are reinstated into the force. Our process suggests that the chief is getting it wrong 50% of the time, but I don't think that's true. I think that often when people are fired for, cops are fired for violating the public trust, for being racist, for being violent. A lot of those cops are ending up back on our force. And so we've got these systems that we, that we can't change. And I think that they make all of our reforms kind of moot. Again, as the council president said, you have a ton of institutions here in Minneapolis that are choosing to end their relationship with the Minneapolis Police Department. And I think that as we, as we all sort of witnessed the murder of George Floyd. And then, and then subsequently witnessed our police respond violently to protesters. Well before the protest itself turned violent. We, we started to say to ourselves, maybe it's time for us to sort of end this relationship as well. Maybe things have gotten untenable. And what we really need is we need a mechanism to keep people safe. Again, I don't want to reiterate everything that people have just said so far, but in recent years, this is just recent years. We have seen our police be involved in a scandal in where police were instructing medical staff illegally to inject people with ketamine. We have, you know, there was an expose about how sexual assault victims felt re-traumatized by our investigations process. Our police department lied about the number of rape kits that had gone untested spanning 30 years back. And so, and, and all of these, and these are just the things that are short of people being killed by police. And there, and there seem to be no consequences. I think that we've got to figure out, how do we keep people safe? And I think that people make some assumptions about the ways in which MPD attempts to keep them safe that aren't real, right? There are certain things that our police department simply aren't doing that people think they're doing.
Yeah, can you talk a little bit more about that? Because I think that's actually a pretty common, a common response in these moments, right? We think of law enforcement as, maybe they mess up sometimes, but they do a really good job of keeping us safe. And I, I think that that's a misconception that a lot of people have, especially outside of communities that are overly policed, overly criminalized. So I'd love to hear you talk a little bit about what that means when we hear, when, when you say that they're not actually doing a great job of keeping us safe right now. What, what, what do you mean?
Yeah, well, I think the examples I just gave are, are, are good examples. But I also think about, without getting too much in the details. I also think about, we've had a number of instances in the past year where we have, where we as a council have had to pay out settlements. Because police have assaulted someone that has been handcuffed. Because the police basically held a number of people hostage on a bus for eight hours or over eight hours without any, without any bathroom, bake, bricks, food or water. You know, we are council members, both prior to this council and on this council, have received threats from police departments saying, hey, if you're critical of the police department. We're going to take extra, we're going to take our time responding to 911 calls. You know, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna punish your ward for your positions on police reform and accountability. You know, these are the things that council members are putting up with, not just in Minneapolis, but I think all across the country. When they're trying to figure out, how do we make this system work better? And they are facing resistance even at the most minor of reforms.
Yeah, so we've seen in the past few weeks, I mean, gosh, the past few days, right? Things shift gigantically on this issue and Minneapolis has obviously been the center of what's been going on. And, you know, what spurred these protests nationwide, George Floyd's death. And it, I mean, for me, it brought back thoughts about Jamar Clark, thoughts about Philando Castile, you know? And it's not a surprise, it's not news that Minneapolis has been having issues for a long time. Earlier this week, at a protest led by the Black Visions Collective of Minnesota, a group that along with Reclaim the Black has led the calls to action in the wake of George Floyd's murder. Mayor Jacob Frey said that he opposed disbanding the police department. And that answer led to loud boos and chants of shame and go home, Jacob, go home. And it was a clip that we all saw. The New York Times called the scene a quote humiliation on a scale almost unimaginable outside of cinema or nightmare. Which is one of the best newspaper leads I've ever read. But really underscored just how dramatic and intense the scene was. What does this exchange say? Do you think about the mayor's ability to lead in a moment like this? And the way he is expected to approach what, what the council has, has put for?
You know, I think that the mayor is, I think the mayor's position is wrong. That's my personal opinion. I think on some level, you do have to admire his willingness to at least stand firm in his position, even under an immense amount of pressure from the crowd. You know, I think that all of our constituents would hope that we come to our positions, no matter what they are, through some level of conviction. And not simply because we are chided by one group or another. That being said, I think that, I think that the mayor should really lean into this call to defund the police. To reimagine a new way of emergency response and a new way of maintaining the peace. I think that he has experienced firsthand the unwillingness of this police department to, to make the kinds of changes that him and the chief have called for. And so my hope is that through these conversations, you know, through a process of community engagement. The mayor can realize that we're not calling an end to safety. We are calling for a new form of public safety that actually keeps people safe. Does MPD keep, keep a handful of people in our city safe? Sure. But they keep them safe at the expense of almost everyone else. And, and that is unsustainable. The amount we pay in settlements is unsustainable. And, and I think that if we don't figure out something soon. We can expect the kind of unrest that we've seen in the past two weeks to continue. We can expect people to continue losing faith in our, in, 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 in local leadership's ability to keep them safe. And I think that we'll, that we'll be sort of derelict in our duty, quite frankly. If we don't take this moment seriously and take it as an opportunity to say, we've all seen the gaps in, in, in our police departments. In their inability to keep people safe and sometimes their willingness to, to perpetuate violence against our communities. What are we going to do about it? In what way are we going to keep everybody safe? Not just those of relative means. I, I hope that the mayor has enough wisdom to, to, to come with us in that conversation.
Thank you so much. So I want to move to Councilmember Kano. Alondra Kano is joining us. This is a new day for communities of Minneapolis, right? I mean, activists, experts, the community in Minneapolis, again, have been pointing out for literally decades that the current system just does not keep people safe. That they don't feel like they have the trust in the system, like they don't feel like they have trust in the police. And your district in particular is one of the most diverse in the city. So can you talk a little bit about what are some of the ways your community has been made less safe by the Minneapolis Police Department? Can you help people who are watching understand sort of the tangible, actual effects that having a police department like this has, has, what it's done to your community?
Sure. Thank you for, for having me on here. You're right in that the Ninth Ward is the most racially integrated community in Minneapolis. We have a strong American Indian community, one of the strongest in the nation. We have a very present East African community with one of the largest mosques in the city, in, in the Twin Cities area, actually. This is the ward with the largest amount of Latino people. We have a very progressive and visible GLTQ community and certainly the heart of organizing that flows from here on items like 15 Now to Raise the Wage. And immigrant rights as well as others. So in our community, of course, I think that the, the murder of Mr. George Floyd almost two weeks ago now is the, the first illustration of how that system has completely failed. I will admit that as a person of color, as a woman of color, as an immigrant, the most, the most clarity has come about recently. In discussing in a very pragmatic way, what an abolition of our department looks like versus a reform movement. And, and I feel like that, that clarity wasn't there before. It wasn't part of the public narrative. It wasn't a part of our public demands. Most of the time for the last three or four years, people have asked us to defund the police department, but never around a framing of, we can create a whole new safety system. That doubles down on engaging the very communities, which are those communities of color that live here in the Ninth Ward. That will need backing during this moment of transition, that will need people to show up in radical mutual aid ways to get us through to the other side. So I want to be clear with you that this isn't a Pollyanna moment for me. A lot of my fears, which it is, it's okay, I think, for me to talk about that because there is this, this kind of unknown component here. That we are now committing to answer and to crystallize, to be able to respond to all those challenges that for the land, for decades now, we've, we've faced. And so I, like probably the chief of police and many of my colleagues, have had to sort of carry this burden of the legacy of the policing system that we were given. To solve a problem with the wrong tool. And so what we're saying here now is now we're finally talking about the tool and saying that tool actually can be totally disbanded and, and put aside. And we have plenty of people and resources and commitment and both risk and commitment to make a new system happen. And that is unprecedented. That is the difference that I feel as an elected official of color, that I can take that buoyancy, that latitude to try new systems. When my full community is standing up behind me saying, yes, this is what we want you to do. And so in general, these communities of colors, yes, have suffered the, the over, you know, the burden and, and, and the over-representation of police brutality cases. From American Indian folks who have been put in police trunks and peed on, to women who have been subjected to commercial sexual exploitation and officers have abused them. And under the guise of trying to do good, to of course, what we saw happen to Mr. George Floyd and losing his life in a, in a very cruel and cold way. So it is, it is a project that I think is much, much long overdue. And I, what I'm sensing now is that people are absolutely ready to take this on.
Yeah, thank you. I really, I really appreciate what you said about this not being a Pollyanna moment and about there being some unknowns. But the necessity of recognizing that when something doesn't work, the next goal is to figure out what does, right? And I think that is the step that Minneapolis is taking right now and that other places are taking in some form. Not, not maybe to the extent of your, your city, but, but are we thinking how they, what, what they rely on the police to do? So we talked about this a little bit earlier, Councilmember Ellison, I mentioned this, I mentioned this at the beginning. Last year, the Minneapolis Police Department failed to solve nearly four out of five sexual assaults. They failed to solve nearly half of all homicides. That's not drastically different than many American cities, right? We see left and right that when we talk about serious violent crimes, which is what people think about when they think about worst case scenario with the police. The police are not doing their jobs or are unable to do their jobs. What does it say about the job that the police department is doing right now to keep people safe that those numbers are so low? And what are we asking them to do instead? I think many people are coming around to the idea that we are asking the police to do too much. We're asking them to solve too many social ills where we, we know at this point, that shouldn't be demanded of them, that shouldn't be required of them. So aside from the, the basic misconduct we see, the basic brutality, if you even take that out, right? They're still, they're still not solving what we want them to solve. This is still a failing grade. So can you talk a little bit about what the, you know, what does it say when we see numbers like four out of five sexual assaults? What does it say when we see less than 50% of homicides are solved? What, what does it say about the department, about the state of policing, I think more generally right now?
I think it goes back to what I mentioned earlier, that we have the wrong tool for the problem that, that we're facing. And that's the, the current structure of the policing system is the wrong tool to try to fix the problems that we're facing. And I'll give you an example, which is something that I like to share with people. As, as a council member, we get to hear from so many different people, right? We have 30,000 people in our ward. There's a lot of, of variety of voices within that. And I'll say that before the murder of Mr. Floyd, I resomberly had agreement between the people who wanted to abolish the police department. And the folks who were a little bit more conservative in their approach to policing, where they might say it's just a couple of bad apples, like can we just get rid of them and, and keep the system? But the, the one agreement they had was, this isn't working. You know, so I have, I have both, you know, very progressive people, you know, who were upset because we hadn't abolished the police department. And then we had, again, conservative folks on, on that spectrum who were saying we can still work with the system. But also very unhappy with how policing and safety was happening in our community because it wasn't working. And so I think that we are all in a big moment of saying, yes, the current system does not work. I think you saw on Sunday that nine of us are seeing this system is not reformable. And now we're getting ready to enter a moment of what I like to call truth and reconciliation. Where in order to come up with a system or a tool that will work to address the very issues you just mentioned. Whether it's commercial sexual exploitation, whether it's the sexual abuse of women in our, in our community. Whether it's trying to address the opioid crisis and the overdoses and the, and the people who are experiencing homeless, homelessness. All of those things, we need to bring to the center of what our new system is going to be. And in order for us, I believe, to have a better system, we must heal and we must come into a process of ceremony. And, and come head on with those hurts and harms that have happened. And the police department has to be a part of that. I firmly believe that for our community to heal and to find and identify a more holistic safety system. We must address the fact that we have all been walking around with wounds and tears and, and bruises and, and, and bloodletting. And, and it's time for us to come head on with that. And that's why when you asked the council member Ellison what he thought about what happened with the mayor. My response to that is, we need to find ways to talk to each other in a deeply human way. In the same way that I've been talking to, to groups and residents since the, since the incident happened, where we've spent two hours on the Zoom every night. To, to find those moments of truth with one another about what it's going to take to get there. And finding that space outside of protests and outside of press conferences to have that conversation, to build that new system. And I deeply believe that that new system must center healing, truth and reconciliation and reparations in that. Because it's not until we are whole and complete that we are going to be able to then shine that light back on to our whole city to say, this is who we are today. This is how we're going to keep each other safe. And that's the process that I think people are signing up to and that they're, they're backing us.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Philippe Cunningham, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Um, I love your shirt.
Thank you.
You've talked about the need to put a plan in place. And there are studies from Yale, from the University of California, Berkeley, that all show that involvement in the criminal justice system and with policing in particular. Leads to sort of a civic alien, alienation, right? They feel, it leads people to feel alienated from government, to feel like government is something that sort of happens to them. As opposed to something in which a person has an active role in shaping. And so how important to you is it that the details of what happens next involve members of the community participating in the process from the early stages? And in particular involves some of the community that have interacted excessively with the police department, right? Maybe interacted with the criminal justice system in the past.
Absolutely. I think that for me, it is absolutely critical that the community is participating from the very beginning of the process. And I know that my colleagues, I don't want to speak on behalf of them, but I do know that they agree with me from that principle as well. And I know that my colleagues, I don't want to speak on behalf of them, but I do know that they agree with me, um, from that principle as well. Folks have been asking, what is the plan? The conversation had to start somewhere and we started it yesterday. That is what we put into motion. The next steps are for us to do deep engagement that centers Black and Brown communities, who have been disproportionately impacted by police violence and community-based violence as well, to co-create these new systems of public safety that are rooted in community and further racial justice. So we must co-create the work ahead with Black, Native, Latinx, Southeast Asian, East African folks, as well as the queer and trans communities and center the public health approach. Our communities know the solutions to the social issues that we struggle with and have for generations because they have been doing this work for generations.
Thank you so much. Um, you were just on a program with President Obama, I don't know if you've ever heard of him, talking about the need to reimagine policing. And you talked about the importance of dealing with Minneapolis police in terms of, um, what I think is just an incredible point, right? Generational inequality, generational trauma, three officer-involved shooting dusting your ward. How do you think disbanding the police addresses these intergenerational issues, including intergenerational trauma that exists within communities, right? Within cities?
I really appreciate this question. I want to also just name before diving into the question is that the panel was on reimagining police and policing. And I just want to clearly state that I do not believe that it is possible to reform policing, that we need complete transformation about what public safety means in our communities. And the reason why I say that is because policing has a direct lineage to slavery and white supremacy. We don't have a paradigm of policing that is not rooted in white supremacy. It's hard to even reimagine what that looks like because we don't have a paradigm for that. And generation after generation in the Black community, as well as other commu- Black and Brown communities as well, has been subjected to various forms of this violence. And I wanted to take a quick second to read, um, a quote from, uh, post-traumatic slave syndrome, uh, that's been written by, um, Joy Degree, uh, Dr., Dr. Joy Degree. The, the quote is, slavery provided white, wealthy white citizens with the ability to purchase an endless supply of men, women and children to abuse in whatever manner their fancies bid them, for however long the slave could survive, and all with total impunity. My great-grandfather was born into slavery. My grandfather was a sharecropper. My dad was a tractor builder. I can say firsthand that I can still feel that trauma in my bones and that this is something that we experienced throughout the entire community. And this is also reflected in the Native community, having experienced genocide and their land stolen. This is where our trauma and rage comes from because we have seen similar behaviors by law enforcement with total immunity from any sort of accountability as Councilmember Allison spoke to. We cannot just stop police brutality with reform efforts when brutality is what the very institution of policing is founded on. So to get to your question about how do we get, how does it really get to intergenerational healing? Is disbanding the police provides us with the opportunity to begin the process of healing. Rather than criminalization, we invest in and center restoration. Rather than mass incarceration, we invest in and center opportunity. Rather than further marginalization, we invest in and center connection to community and care. This is how we begin the process of healing historical and generational trauma. And to also further speak to intergenerational trauma that we experience in our communities, the public health approach to public safety treats violence as a contagious disease. And like any other infectious disease, it can be prevented and treated. That is the framing that we must root ourselves in as we move forward, reimagining public safety entirely and building new alternative systems of keeping our communities safe.
Thank you so much. I think, um, I, I think that when people, people often say, well, what about policing in other countries? What, we just, we could, you know, police don't always have to look like this. And I think what's hard to understand in certain communities is that the history of policing in America is unlike the history of policing in anywhere else in the world. Um, that's not to say everywhere else in the world, the police are, are perfect, but just to say that our history of policing is, and the role that law enforcement has played in so many communities has been, um, it has been encouraging, um, you know, what we would consider a morality, not just, not just protecting it. And so I want, I, I, I really want to remind people that when we're thinking about a re-imagination of public safety, we're, we're not, what we're saying is that there is the ability to imagine a different future with systems that don't have to reflect what our history has always reflected. So thank you so much, so much for that. Um, I want to move on, um, to Lindell French. Thank you for joining us, Commissioner French. Can I see you? Can I hear you? You might be on mute. You're on mute.
There you go.
Yeah, now I can hear you. Um, but I can't see you. There we go. Perfect. Um, so thank you for joining us. As part of the Minneapolis Parks and Recreation Board of Commissioners and as part of, as part of the Park Police Governance Operations and Oversight Committee, you recently voted to end the Parks Department's relationship with the Minneapolis Police, which helped kind of propel the council's decision. What made you decide that the Parks Department, um, should not be working with the police department?
Well, I, I think right now, uh, Minneapolis is at a critical time. As far as policing comes, uh, 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 there was a, there was a myriad of institutions that were also doing this and we wanted to push the Minneapolis Police Department into this direction. So we thought maybe, uh, we could use the weight of our relationship with our park board to, you know, influence the city council's decision on this, and which I believe we did. You know, I don't know how much it did, but it, I, I think the decision, uh, was made because of other organizations like University of Minnesota, uh, the Walker Institute and other organization like that. That said, we, we, we don't like the way the Minneapolis Police Department, our police.
I think you froze. Okay. I can see you. Thank you.
All right.
Um, and can you, can you talk about how you see parks and public spaces more generally being transformed from Minneapolis residents in the future? Um, what it means to have these public spaces in these parks without, um, this level of police presence?
Well, I, I think we have a unique opportunity, uh, in Minneapolis, uh, park board because we have less than forty sworn officers. And I think we have an organization that's small, I think it's, it's, it's easier to, to make some changes. I think, I've told folks, uh, who work in our park board, that every person who works where, at our, within our parks is a youth worker, whether it be a police officer, whether it be the person that cuts the grounds, whether, whether it be anybody, right? Your, your youth workers, that's who you're going to interact with. I don't think we need today's policing model in our parks. There's only two percent, two and a half percent of the crime that happens in Minneapolis happens in our parks. I don't see how we can justify spending seventy million dollars a year on a park police department, when only two and a half percent of the crime that happens in our city happens in our parks. And we are the largest landowner in the city of Minneapolis. I, I think we could spend that money other, in other ways. We spend about less than three million dollars on non-sports youth outreach. I would love to hire a lot more youth workers. I think that's how you, uh, you cut down some of the violence. Uh, you got kids doing stuff, having, having, having folks from the community that these kids know and respect. Uh, I think that's the key to keep a lot of, uh, violence down, keep, keep folks safe. There is, there, there is a, there's a small minority of people, I believe, who think that the police are here to save us or, or make us safe. I, I, I'm not one of those people, but I want to be, uh, I want to make sure that I'm listening to those folks, I'm listening to those, their concerns. Uh, because, you know, certain areas are kind of hard to say that other, as, or, or that I perceive to be a safe as other. But I don't think we need, uh, traditional policing models in our parks. I think we need more people who, who have an educational, um, uh, more, more educational, uh, theme or field to the police or, you know, that's, I want, I want a kid or anybody who visits our park to be able to talk to a park ranger is what I would like and, and, and get information about the animals that they just see or, or the garbage and everything. That's, that's what I want, uh, as far as policing in our park. And if something happens that we have, we have people there that can take care of that. Law enforcement, I believe, should be, uh, completely, maybe a secondary or maybe even a third uh, role of, of folks who carry guns in our parks. I, I don't think policing in, um, I don't think traditional policing works for our parks. And that's definitely, that definitely doesn't necessarily work for Black and Brown folks in our parks. We had an issue, uh, about a year or two ago where, uh, we paid out over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to some, uh, youth from, uh, uh, East Africa who were mistreated and mishandled by police. So we, we, uh, definitely, uh, are living in a glass house. So it's not like we, we got some own housekeeping, you know, we have our own housekeeping that we needed to, uh, but I, I think there is definitely, uh, a critical mass of, of folks who want to change their policies. Like not just in our, in our, in our cities, but in our parks and our state patrol and other places.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you to all of you for joining us, um, on the briefing. Uh, you all have, um, been the center of so much of the conversation nationally in the past few weeks. And your decision to disband the police department and rethink public safety um, is leading the way in cities across the country. So we appreciate you taking the time and we appreciate you tuning into the briefing, tuning again tomorrow for a new episode of the briefing. And, um, thank you, everyone, for joining us.